I call the meeting to order for the May 23 regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
Yes, there is. Regarding Agenda Item 4A, a motion was made by Mayor Potem O'Neil and seconded by Councilmember Kleiman to have the city join or intervene in the litigation titled Orange County Coast Keepers versus U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and Friends of Newport Harbor versus U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And that relates to the Newport Harbor and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers dredging project and the confined aquatic disposal site. All the councilmembers voted in favor of the motion. And then just to reiterate, for those who came in late, the ordinance number under 142023-7, which relates to the fee study, that's got continued to June 13. And Agenda Item Number 16 regarding the short-term lodging units, that got continued to a future date.
Wonderful. Thank you. Now is the time for the invocation by Pastor Phil Eskins, Lighthouse of Costa Mesa Church of Nazarene.
I believe I may have met you, Mayor Blum, at the lighthouse when we had the temporary bridge shelter on our property. It's always an opportunity and a privilege to, as a clergy, to come here and speak before the city council. So Emma Willard was born in 1787. At 16 years of age, she became a schoolteacher and later in life, a historian. She was an integral part of the movement of her day to provide opportunities for higher education among women. In 1843, she said this, "The government of the United States is acknowledged by other free nations, wise nations, to be the most free, impartial, and righteous government in the world. But all agree that for such a government to be sustained for many years, the principles of truth and righteousness taught in the holy scriptures must be practiced. The rulers must govern in the fear of God, and the people must obey the laws." About 40 years earlier, our second president, John Adams, said this, "Our constitution was made only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other." What Adams was saying was, "Our constitution will only work for a people who already possess a good sense of right and wrong." And in 1913, President Woodrow Wilson said, "A nation which does not remember what it was yesterday does not know what it is today, nor what it is trying to do. It is a futile thing if we did not know where we came from or what we have been about." Can we pray? Heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of your son. Father, we trust this great city council, these leaders that I believe you have called. I believe that every person who is put in the role of leadership is not there by accident. Father, even if that's clergy or leaders of local communities, Father, we pray that you would touch the heart, not only of the leaders, but of the citizens of this great city, that you might give us wisdom to make the right decisions and do the right things for the best interests of all its constituents. And we pray these things in the name of your son, Jesus. And everybody said, amen.
Thank you. If you'll please join me in the pledge allegiance to our beautiful country. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to start with some presentations. The first item is a proclamation to the Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter. Let me read the proclamation, then we'll have Newport Beach Animal Shelter President John Langford come up and say a few words.
Save Newport Beach Proclamation, where as Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter is a nonprofit organization dedicated to promoting animal welfare and providing a safe and nurturing environment for animals in need. And in conjunction with the city's animal control officers, serve as many as 500 dogs, cats, bunnies, guinea pigs, and other pets in temporary care per year. They've worked since 2017 to raise funds and awareness for the construction of a new permanent animal shelter in the City of Newport Beach and have raised over $3.2 million to date for more than 1,500 private donations, purchased land in the city at Riverside Drive, and developed a new modern animal shelter. They've generously donated the new shelter to the city and demonstrated a remarkable commitment to enhancing the quality of life of the community and improve the lives of animals. We express our deepest gratitude and appreciation to the Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter for their tireless efforts to promote animal welfare and for their generous contribution of the new animal shelter to the city. We recognize the invaluable role that they have played in helping to improve the lives of animals in our community and for their dedication to promoting responsible pet ownership and animal welfare and making Newport Beach a more compassionate and humane community. We commend them for their unwavering commitment to building a new state-of-the-art animal shelter for the city, and we encourage all members of the community to support them in their efforts to promote animal welfare and take responsibility for the care and well-being of our furry friends. I, Noah Blom, mayor of the City of Newport Beach, and on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize and proclaim the appreciation and gratitude of the people of Newport Beach for the outstanding contribution of the Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter. Thank you guys so much. This has been amazing. If you'd like to...
Now, John. Come on up, John.
Good evening. Let's see if I can get this thing to work. Can we go on screen? All right. Thank you. Mayor Blom, city council members, it is with great honor and gratitude that I stand before you today, President of Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter. On behalf of our dedicated Board of Directors and the numerous individuals who have contributed to our cause, I would like to express our sincere appreciation for your recognition. Before I continue, I'd like to take a moment to introduce the extraordinary people who comprise our hard-working Board of Directors. Each of them has played an instrumental role in bringing this vision to life. First, we have Secretary Sharon Esterly, whose tireless efforts and organizational skills have been invaluable in keeping our operations running smoothly. Treasurer Walt Howold, a true community champion who was recently honored as the Newport Beach Citizen of the Year and served as PBNR Commissioner. Your very own Robin Grant, of course, whose passion for animal and community support has been instrumental in our success. Eva Lebon and her husband Doug deserve special recognition for their extraordinary generosity as the largest major donor to our Capitol Campaign. Their commitment to our cause has been nothing short of remarkable. Facilities Chairman Tom Fishbacher, retired member of the Newport Beach Police Department, has basically become a construction foreman over the last year and a half and leading the way to a successful completion of our shelter facility. And Sandy Meadows, who recently surpassed 10,000 hours volunteering for the Newport Beach Police Department in the Volunteers in Policing Program. She's an invaluable member of our board who has proven to be a true utility player, contributing her skills and expertise wherever they've been needed most. It is also important to honor those who have shaped our journey from the beginning. We would like to pay tribute to our recently departed board members Evelyn Hart and Jean Watt. They were the granddams of Newport Beach, and their legacy will forever be remembered in our hearts. And shout-outs to other founding board members Nancy Gardner and Tim Stokes for their massive contributions over the years. And as you said earlier, the need for the local animal shelter arose from our shared desire to keep Newport Beach's animals within our community. We wanted to ensure that we had full control over their well-being rather than relying on services from the county or another municipality. And recognizing this need, a previous city council took a significant step by leasing a property in Newport Beach. However, we were determined to provide a permanent facility, one that would guarantee the care and welfare of our beloved animals regardless of future circumstances. So in 2017, FONBOS was formed, a group of passionate individuals united by a common goal, and through dedication and community support, we managed to raise over $1 million by 2020. It was during the COVID crisis that we seized the opportunity to acquire the property that will now serve as the animal shelter. And recognizing the need for a state-of-the-art facility, we embarked on a Capitol Campaign to secure the additional $2 million for the construction of the shelter and the community rally behind us demonstrating the commitment to the well-being of our furry friends. And we've received over 1,500 donations since then. And through the combined efforts of our dedicated board and the generosity of major donors like Eva and Doug Lebon and the support of countless residents, we are proud to announce that today we stand here with a brand-new, fully-equipped animal shelter, a testament to the power of community and compassion. I'm told that just a few hours ago, we received our certificate of occupancy, and in a few short days, we'll be cutting the ribbon on-site. And this remarkable achievement would not have been possible without the unwavering support of the City of Newport Beach. We extend our heartfelt gratitude to the city council for recognizing the importance of animal welfare and partnering with us on this journey. And with the completion of this facility, we not only provide a safe haven for our animals, but we also strengthen the bond between our residents and their furry companions. Our shelter will serve as a beacon of hope, offering second chances to those in need and uniting families with their beloved pets. And in conclusion, I'd like to express our profound gratitude to the city council, the community of Newport Beach, and every individual who has contributed their time, resources, and support to the Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter. Together, we have created a legacy of compassion that will endure for generations to come. FONBOS will continue as an organization dedicated to serving animals of our community, and for as long as Newport Beach loves their animals, we'll be there to help. Thank you.
Wonderful. If we'd like to take a picture over there, that'd be wonderful. The next presentation is a proclamation for National Public Works Week, which, if you were here for our study session, is a very apropos time for this. I'll read the proclamation, and then our Public Works Director, Dave Webb, come up and say a few words.
The City of Newport Beach Proclamation, Public Works Professionals Focus on the City's Infrastructure, Facilities, and Services that are of fundamental importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public welfare, safety, and well-being of the people of the City of Newport Beach. These infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the Public Works Professionals comprised of engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for building, improving, maintaining, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply and treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, parks, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. It is the public interest for the citizens, it is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and the City of Newport Beach to expand their knowledge of and to maintain a continuing interest and understanding of the importance of public works programs in their respective communities. The year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. I, Noah Blom, mayor of the City of Newport Beach, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week in the City of Newport Beach, and I encourage all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works Professionals and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Dave, please.
Gosh, thank you very much. I'm just humbled to be here again, and I say that from my heart because I've seen this council and the councils before us really embrace infrastructure and the foundation it is to our city, our nation. You've always been supportive. I sat for 15 years here and felt nothing but support from our council and our citizens. And I'm just so thankful we live in a city like that. I speak of something that oftentimes is taken for granted. We all do that. We take a shower, and we just expect the water to come out, to go away, to be clean, the roads to work. And I'll sell you a little story on that because I even take it for granted at times. I realized it last week when we had those big tides coming. And I was sitting at home thinking about, well, watching TV and a few things, and it dawned on me, we have a huge tide coming up, and tonight's the big night. And I text Mike Amart, our deputy director, and I said, "How's it going? Where are we at?" And I was thinking about it. I said, "I got guys on the line out there. I got guys bracing." He goes, "The waves are coming over top. I think we're going to be all right." But at that moment, I thought about it. It's like, if they weren't out there doing their job, we would have had a huge disaster. And if we weren't funded to have our equipment work, and you guys so pay overtime. But I thought more about the taking it for granted because I remember all those folks who were sitting out there didn't even know there was a defensive crew out there holding a sand berm up. God tells us to build on rock, we build on sand. And these waves are coming. They're coming over top. It could have been devastating. But the credit goes to those crews, the ones that turn the valves at night, the ones that keep the water on. Those are the heroes that I get to work with every day. And on that note, I'll let you know that we have a bunch of our leaders back there. You know most of those folks, but our Public Works staff. I know Mike's prior Public Works. He can stand there. Mike, he's with our finance department. He used to be in Public Works. But they came down here tonight just to thank you also. It is such a joy to work in this city. And again, if other cities would take some of the lessons from Newport Beach, where you well-funded, you think it through, you do your master plans, you plan ahead, we'd probably be in better shape in a lot of places and a lot less grief. But thank you from my heart, from my staff's part, for supporting Public Works. Thank you, the residents of Newport Beach, for all of us being there to support us in the opportunity tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. We appreciate you guys. Let's all come up and take a picture. Public Works team could come up, too. That'd be great. Madam Clerk, notice the public.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited, three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Perfect. Now is the time for council announcements, oral reports from council members on committee activities, and the time for council members to request an A1 item to be placed on the future agenda. Councilmember Kleiman, do you have any announcements?
I just have one quick announcement. I'll be brief because we have a long agenda tonight. I had the opportunity to speak about the airport at the Newport Beach Foundation's Leadership Fair at Sherman Gardens and also address the mayor's youth council participants along with Mayor Blom and Councilmember Grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stapleton.
Yeah, I just want to start by congratulating the Newport Beach Foundation on their most recent polo tournament. They were co-hosts, and I want to thank Sean Levin and his team for his full support and Police Sergeant Oberon for his support with special events with the police department. And I see Chief Cartwright back there. It was a phenomenal day of polo in Newport Beach on the grass fields over by the Balboa Pier. We raised a lot of good money for local charities and scholarships, so mission accomplished. Also, was at the Sunset View Park and Bridge with some of my cohorts up here, and it was fun to watch Public Works in action and see the $10.5 million investment on the west side of Newport Beach to connect a 130 parking spot, parking lot, over to the Sunset Ridge Park up on the hill. I also had an opportunity to tour the Santa Ana River Marsh. Supervisor Foley had a lot of the Newport Shore residents over there to look at the dredging project coming down the road in that area. So that was enjoyable to see that. And the continued investment, also a lot of conversation about sand replenishment on the west side of Newport Beach because our beaches have certainly been hit recently. And then finally, I want to thank another volunteer in the police department, Laird Hayes. He had me out to speak with his OCC, Orange Coast College, Water Safety Course, and I did that a few days ago. It was fun to see the students and talk about community service and the importance in a city like Newport Beach. So that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
Just a few things. I want to mention that last week, I attended the Association of California Cities Board of Directors installation, and I want to congratulate City Manager Grace Long and Mayor Potem O'Neil on their board appointments in that prestigious association. I also attended the opening day of the Balboa Yacht Club. Our yacht club openings are quite fascinating and very fun to attend, and I was honored to be able to be there. I also want to congratulate Joe, Councilmember Stapleton, and his crew as well as the American Polo Association on an amazing event, bringing polo to the peninsula. Really incredible to see the horses and the camaraderie and the sportsmanship with that kind of an event, and looking forward to that being an annual legacy project in our city, legacy event in our city. Also, this last weekend, we had Public Safety Day in our city, and that was a wonderful opportunity to showcase our first responders and the other groups that support our city so fully, the safety in our city. I had another very important honor in attending the Citizens Police Academy graduation. That's a 12-week-long training program that's offered in the city. Many of us here have done it. I know many people probably in the audience have done this training program. It's a really wonderful way to understand our PD and the services that they provide to our community. They hold sessions twice a year, and I would absolutely recommend anybody to go on the website. And it's now time to submit an application for the upcoming program, which starts in, if I'm not mistaken, in August and goes through November. It's one week night a week, and it's a great, great fun training that the PD provides. We also had Battle in the Bay this year. The Newport Beach Battle in the Bay was hosted by, again, Laird Hayes, who's a community volunteer, as well as our recreation department under Sean Levin, and Newport Harbor High School and CDM had some great fun in 62-degree water. I don't know how these kids did it, but they all just jumped in and had a great time. It wasn't daunting to them at all. And then finally, two things that happened this weekend were really great opportunities for the public to come out. One was at the Oasis Senior Center, and I absolutely want to highlight the wonderful work done by one of our employees, the Oasis Health and Wellness Supervisor Jenna Zapian, if I'm not incorrect. She coordinated an incredible event, bringing together dozens and dozens of seniors-serving providers. And there were hundreds and hundreds of seniors there. It was really amazing to see what can happen at Oasis Senior Center for our community there. And then finally, Public Works had Touch a Truck out on the peninsula this weekend. Hundreds of families out there, very loud, dogs, kids, and a lot of honking and just a lot of interesting touching of trucks. So thank you all for those great events in the city this last two weeks.
Thank you. Councilmember Wagon.
Yeah, I'll just touch on that Touch a Truck and then also the Police and Fire Public Safety Day. So two weekends ago was the Public Safety Day with Police and Fire, and then last weekend was the Touch a Truck event. And those are just great community events for our youngsters to go out and see our families, to go out and see even just residents and those. And we're so appreciative of the city of Police and Fire, and those are easy ones to be appreciative, but you often forget about the Public Works guys. And as Dave just mentioned during that presentation, those are the guys that are out there all the time protecting our city. So it was nice to see on those two events, a lot of our staff being out there on the weekends. And Saturday morning isn't always the best day for people to want to come back to work, but the smiles on the staff's faces when the kids were going in and out of the trucks, the demonstrations, the burgers, TK burgers at both locations. A lot of families were very appreciative of the service and hard work of our Public Works team and our Public Safety, Fire, and Police. So it was nice to see that on a resident perspective, having children, getting to enjoy those items, and then also seeing it just at this level, knowing that those guys are out there for us in this community. So we're appreciative of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery.
Yeah, I also attended the Battle in the Bay with the Kona Mar and Newport Harbor kids. And turns out, not all the youth are lazy. That's a hard sport, and they are in great shape, both the men and the women, just unbelievable. And seeing the parents and just what a great venue in that little marina with everybody all around it. When it happens next year, I have a feeling it will happen next year, don't miss it. It's really something. It's a great community event. And I was surprised by just sort of the fun of it. I also attended the Public Works Gather, some of us council members together that were able to make it for the sort of seeing what's going on with the Superior Bridge Project. And those of you that have driven by, there's a lot of earth being moved and a lot of steel going on, and it's extraordinary. And you kind of look at it and go, what is going on here? But what's really going on, aside from obviously access to the park above and linking things up to double down on parking on the other side near, on the Hope Hospital side, is it's going to make a huge difference in traffic when those crosswalks disappear and traffic's able to flow. The streets are so wide and with ADA increases in the timing of lights to allow folks with disabilities to get across the intersections, it's really backing up traffic. So it's really, to my eye, multiple benefits of the Superior Avenue Bridge and perhaps in the future, a coast highway bridge as well, get people safely to the beach, not having to go across the intersections. If you spend any time there, we've all been through there. It can be pretty wild with that much, that many lanes coming together. And I have to say, my favorite thing was to go to the Newport Harbor Theater Arts announcement of their upcoming season, and that's in my district, District 2. It's right there at the John Wayne Park. And it's just amazing what those residents put together and some imported talent on their shows. And I'm really excited about their first show in the new season, and that's the Addams Family. So I'm looking forward to that. And they do a great job and worthy of everybody's support and attendance. The theater is so small, you're just right there, and you're seeing some great acting by amateurs and pros. Thank you.
Mayor Potem.
Yep. In addition to what folks were talking about, was able to take my daughter to the Balboa Island Art Walk on Sunday. Great. I'm really glad that that's back. In coming weeks, by the way, we're going to be able to put up the slide. Okay, I'll come in a second. So in coming weeks, we have a Finance Committee meeting on Thursday at 3:00 PM. We have the Field of Honor. If you haven't been able to get up there to Castaways Park and see the 1,776 flags, I really encourage you to do so. Put on by the Newport Harbor Put on by the Newport Harbor Exchange Club. It's a true testament to the memory of a lot of people who have served this country. So, we have on Monday, the Memorial Day, the Field of Honor Ceremony. I believe it starts at noon. Then on June 4th, the Balboa Island Parade is going. Really encourage everyone to come. That will be a lot of fun. And then, let's go, yeah, put it up. So, Transportation Corridor Agencies, I am our city's representative on that board. For folks who do not know, we have two boards that are the toll roads. The first one is San Joaquin Hills, which is the 73, and then you have the Foothill Eastern Board, which oversees the 133, 241, and 261. Those agencies exist essentially to take on debt, to then build those roads, and then pay that debt off for a while. One of the promises that were made to people was that eventually the debt would be paid off and the tolls would go away. That debt was extended years ago, but those of us on the agency board right now are committed to going back to that original promise and making sure that those, that debt does get paid off. So, for the last few years, I've been the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee for the two agencies. I am currently the Chair of the Finance Committee for both agencies, and I'm also the Chair of the Board for the San Joaquin Hills. At our most recent, at our most recent meeting, is there any way to zoom in on kind of like the top half? And if not, that's okay. But at our most recent meeting, we, we had a discussion about what's been going on over the last few years. Primarily, it has been to go ahead with increasing our bond rating pretty substantially for doing a variety of things, but our bond ratings have increased pretty substantially. And once we did the bond rating, it's okay if we can. Once we did a fairly substantial bond rating increase, it allowed us to go out on the market, refinance the debt without extending the maturity dates. And once we were able to complete that, the rates, then the interest rates started going up. Once the interest rates went up, there was actually a market now for us to buy back our old debt. And so, combined, combining the two, and this is hard dollars, it's not, it's not fictional. The, right now, by actions taken by both boards in the last three years, we have reduced our, the long-term, the total debt paydown by almost $1.3 billion, which will hopefully allow a future board to pay it down faster and go away. That is the goal, and it's actually quite fun to try to find a way to make a government agency go away. I'm enjoying it. Thank you. That helps. So, you can see up here, the discussion, it's a reduction of debt by almost $1.3 billion. If you could go to the bottom. Or, yeah, all the way. We actually have a plan in place right now to go out to 2030, where his maturity dates are coming up. We anticipate saving an additional $860 million in interest payments, meaning that by 2030, with everything that we have done, we plan, we expect the debt reduction to be reduced by $3.1 billion by 2030. And then, like I said, the goal is to have a future board actually fold the tent and have the tolls go away. So, your city of Newport Beach is doing a lot to try to reduce the financial burdens on everyone, and this is a big one on the regional basis. So, anyway, thanks for giving me the time to speak on that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and that is huge for any of the, before we came onto that board, it did not sit in the same financial situation that it does now. And Public Works has asked me to say a couple of quick words about our compost and shredding event this Saturday, May 27th, from 9:00 to 12:00. If you're familiar with those events, they are super helpful if you need to get rid of a bunch of materials. Duffy, I'm looking your way. And get some composts going as well. It's going to go from 9:00 to 12:00 over on our city yard. Okay. We're now on matters which council members have asked to be placed on the future agenda. This is going to be a non-discussion item. I do have a conflict related to this item based on my interest in the properties at 417 and 50130th, and will be recusing myself from this item.
Great. All right. It's a non-debatable item, and by a show of hands, do we have, who would like to see this come back at a future meeting for discussion?
At 6:00 with Mayor Blom recusing himself.
Okay. That was quick.
Right. Madam Clerk, will you please read the notice regarding public comments on consent calendar?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 13. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members are received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that, prior to the time the items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Councilmember Kleiman, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts to announce related to 1 through 13?
I do not.
Councilmember Stapleton?
I have none.
Councilmember Grant?
None.
Councilmember Wigan?
None.
Councilmember Avery?
I have none.
Mayor Protem?
Aaron, I should have done this on the clarifications for the study session, but while, when we go out to public comment, could you double-check that I'm right on this? I think item number seven references Council Policy F-20, which doesn't exist anymore. I believe we would be waiving Council Policy F-14. So, I'm going to incorporate that into my motion, but I just wanted you to double-check that for me if you, if you could. Thanks.
Wonderful. And I do have a conflict regarding item number four, and will be recusing myself based upon financial interests in restaurants located at 41730th, 50130th, 224 Marine Avenue, and 2902 West Pacific Coast Highway.
All right. Mr. Mayor, with modifications of the minutes that are found in, out in front, and also up on the dais, with a recusal from our mayor on number four, and I believe I'm correct, so I'm going to say a waiver of Council Policy F-14 on item seven, I move the consent calendar.
Wonderful. Do we have a second? The Councilmember Stapleton. Perfect. Let's go out to public comments on consent calendar items, 1 through 13. Any public comments on consent calendar? Come on up, Denise.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Denise Overman, I would like to comment on consent calendar item number 11. And I haven't done this in a while, so perhaps you could refresh. Do I make the comment now, or do I wait? Make it now? Okay. Conversion of Boardwalk Ambassador Program. I'd like to express my personal appreciation out of the community to Councilman Joe Stapleton for championing this, and also to the staff for working on this. This issue has been around and has been of growing impact and concern to the community for many years, and it's really great that somebody listened, paid attention, found a constructive solution. And as I understand it, the solution will be kicked off very shortly here, hopefully this holiday weekend. So, thank you again.
Wonderful. Any other public comments on consent calendar? Wonderful. Seeing none. Any additional council comments up here? Seeing none. Let's take a vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for items 3 and 4, ordinance 2023-4, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, approving an amendment to Title 20, Planning and Zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code Related Timeshares. Ordinance 2023-5, approving and authorizing submitted level Local Coastal Program Amendment to the California Coastal Commission, amending Title 21 Local Coastal Program Implementation Plan of the Newport Beach Municipal Code Related to Timeshares. And ordinance 2023-6, amending Title 20, Planning and Zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code Related to Commercial Parking.
Not showing up for Noah and me.
Okay. Thumbs up. All right. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Wonderful. Let's go out to public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments on any non-agenda items right now? That means most of you are for agenda items. That's great to see. All right. Seeing none. All right, we're going to move into the public hearing, and I just want to really quickly again restate. Item number 14 has been continued to the next meeting. That was the item regarding the fee structure for subscription program fees for paramedics in addition to item 16, which has also been continued. So, if we're looking for comments on 14 or 16, those are at later dates. All right. So, let's move into the ever-so-exciting item number 15. This is the ordinance and resolution, recommendations resulting from Harbor Commission Objective 2.3 to improve navigation, safety, and allow for additional moorings within the fields and mooring sites. It looks like we have a lot of speakers here today, and I'm very excited about that. We do want to hear what lots of people have to say. We are going to limit comments to two minutes. If you need some additional time because you have a subpoint to make, I'm happy to entertain that at the time, but in the essence of getting through this, please. Let's go to our staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Paul Blank, your harbor master. With me here this evening are Harbor Commission Vice Chair Ira Beer, America's Cup Harbor Portmaster Greg Bay. Captain Bay is a licensed tugboat and commercial ferry operator. For 16 years, Mr. Bay was the Marine Operations Supervisor for the San Diego Port Authority, where he directly managed 10-acre cruise ship terminal, 127-slip commercial marina, and several mooring fields containing the 437 mooring buoys. Mr. Bay currently manages operations at Pier 32 Marina and the San Diego Mooring Company for over 750 recreational slips and moorings in San Diego Bay, including the approximately 180 double-row moorings in America's Cup Harbor. Also with me is Noble Consultants VP of Operations, Thomas Fichetti, an engineer with Noble Consultants, who you may recognize as having been involved in numerous other projects surrounding harbor operations for the city of Newport Beach. We've all had a hand in crafting the proposal we are presenting this evening. Attached to the agenda for this evening is a robust staff report that I'm pleased to acknowledge was not crafted by an AI tool. It does, however, describe the background that led to the current pilot program proposal and the changes to Harbor Code Title 17 that the Harbor Commission feels are necessary, not only to carry out an effective and complete pilot test to optimize the sea mooring field, but also necessary for overall improvement and clarification to the existing code. The ask of you this evening is to approve the recommended changes to Title 17, authorize staff to pursue the necessary permitting, and appropriate $410,000 to fund the pilot program's implementation. With that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Beer.
Thank you, Harbor Master Blank. Good evening, Mayor Blom, council members. Before I start the presentation, I would like to make what I would consider my top four important statement of facts, just for the benefit of the audience that has been exposed to a lot of information. What's being presented tonight is a recommendation for approval of a pilot test for one mooring field. That is one mooring field only, which is the sea field. And if approved, the moorings will be repositioned in rows of similar size, but no one will be moved outside their current mooring field. All adjustments will be made within the existing field. If your mooring is moved, every attempt will be made to move you to a like-for-like position. So, if you're on an end tie, you'll remain on an end tie wherever possible. The proposed changes to Title 17 do not affect transferability to existing mooring permits. Transferability for all existing mooring permits will remain the same. So, thank you, and with that, excuse me, let's begin. Does this click this way? Great. So, Harbor Commission Objective 2.3 is an open-water initiative, and it's defined as to evaluate the current mooring fields and provide a recommendation for new guidelines that better define rows and fairways to improve navigation and safety and improve optimization of space within the mooring fields. The Harbor Commission believes that what's being presented, recommended this evening, achieves these elements. The problem is that for decades, there have been no guidelines for mooring lengths, extension requests, spread of lines, or fairway navigation guidelines. For the benefit of anyone that doesn't know, a spread of line holds the mooring balls together and prevents them from drifting into the fairways, plus it's an opportunity to grab the line when you're attempting to moor your boat to a mooring. But as a result of no regulation and guidelines, it's created dangerously narrow and cluttered fairway, cluttered fairways. Additionally, many boats have extended their mooring lengths, and as they move from currents or for other reasons, they're never really moved back unless they're interfering with another boat. So, the result is sort of a chaotic mess, as you can see. If you were trying to navigate through these fairways, it would be very, very difficult. The current spacing between boats and fairway widths presents a challenge for mariners, and this is just an example of spacing that's less than 20 feet in many instances throughout the harbor. Anyone that's cruised through the harbor knows how congested it is to go through the mooring fields and typically avoids doing so for safety reasons. I do want to make reference to the picture on the left, the image on the left, which shows a fairway at less than 20 feet. Those two mooring buoys there, that's the fairway. So, of course, it's difficult to navigate through that if you're in a reasonable-sized vessel, but I also want to point out, if you notice the boat that's right in front of the picture, there's a mooring ball, and then there's a line attached to the bow. That mooring ball is about 10 feet away from that bow. So, while the mooring balls in the fairway are less than 20 feet, the boats themselves are at least 30 feet apart. So, I just want to make reference to that, keep that in mind for later. The solution, or a solution to this challenge and problem that's out there today, is to utilize a double-row concept versus a single-row mooring configuration. The result will improve public access and utilization of water space over public tidelines. It will increase the size of the navigational channels throughout the harbor. Will have wider and well-defined fairways inside the mooring field, increased spacing between moorings in the same row, overall more room to navigate to or departing from a mooring. All of this equals safer navigation. Additionally, it'll allow for a few new moorings to be added in each field. This is a aerial of a single-row mooring field. This is right across from Marina Park. If you're not familiar with the J and H, the numbers of the fields, these are really considered one, one large mooring field. And without policies defining rows and fairway sizes, this is a very inefficient use of limited waterways. All of you that have traveled through this area know how narrow that space is between Lido Island and the boats. And if you look at the space as a whole, this is a beautiful piece of water that is pretty much hardly usable at all. It's covered by a large parking lot of boats. This, oh, and by the way, I just want to mention that in this slide, there are approximately 200 moorings that cover 30 acres of space. This is an example of America's Cup Harbor in San Diego. 90% of the moorings are occupying only 15 acres, or 50% of the space. It's clear that double rows do provide a more efficient use of limited space. Standardizing the boat sizes per row results in wider fairways for improved public access. America's Cup Harbor has been operating safely for about 40 years. San Diego Harbor and Newport Harbor experience similar wind and current speeds, although America's Cup Harbor may experience some less current than in the main channel. I'd like to point out that the double-row mooring concept, for example, at America's Cup Harbor, was considered as an efficient design option for layout purposes only. The Newport Harbor double-row mooring field design started with a completely clean slate. None of the design criteria related to America's Cup Harbor was considered. For example, the anchor type, the spacing, the weight, the chain size, and so on. A new design was delivered to the city's GIS department for mapping, and noble consulting engineers were hired to review the layout and report their findings. Noble Engineer considered prevailing westerly and Santa Ana winds, predicted water current speeds, the mooring spacing in the rows, and the spacing between rows and fairways, safety requirements for the anchor weights, chains, and so on. As a result, we have put together specifications that identify the type of anchor and weight, chain size, length, the spread of line, distance between boats and fairways, and so on. None of this exists in the current Title 17 municipal code. There are no guidelines for this today. So, try again. Okay, there we go. So, the improved double-row design for two-point moorings that's been put together, this is basically a drawing for reference only. The visual representation varies greatly from the dimensions of what Newport Harbor layout will look like. Those dimensions are shown on the drawing. This is actually a, an image from America's Cup Harbor. But as you can see, what the intent is, that the boats will be 50 to 60 feet on center. That large fairway that you see will be indicative of the fairways of Newport Harbor's mooring fields with a minimum of 1.5 fields with a minimum of 1.5 LOA, which is basically the length overall of that mooring. So if you have a 50-foot row of boats, the space in the fairway will be 75 feet wide. This is substantially greater than exists today. The distance between the boats that are sharing the same row, which is located on the left, I would like to really clearly point out, on the bottom of the seafloor, those two squares, those are the anchors, those are the anchor weights. They will weigh between 1,500 and 4,000 pounds each, depending upon the size of the vessel. But those weights are 20 feet apart from each other. So if you remember that photo that I showed you earlier on, where the boats, when the mooring balls were 20 feet apart, the boats are 30 feet apart. And that's because there's a lot more chain and line attached than there is height of water, so the opposing anchors can pull the boat. These boats will typically be 25 to 30 feet apart, with the anchor weights spaced at 20 feet. They could be as much as 40 feet apart, according to the engineer's calculations based upon the tides. Also, what we have considered is a new environmental design in using conservation moorings. And as you can see from the photo on the left, although it's a little blurred, mooring chains scar the floor, the seafloor. It destroys eelgrass, disrupts the marine ecosystem. The California Coastal Commission has imposed strict guidelines for eelgrass monitoring and mitigation. We would like to install eco-moring buoys, which essentially is just a buoy that keeps the chain off the floor, the seafloor, and it promotes marine life restoration in our harbor, plus it should please the folks at the coastal commission. In our harbor, this is a recent bathymetry that was done, shows some eelgrass concentration, which is primarily in our A and B fields, which the B field sits parallel to Balboa Island. But what we're looking at today, as I mentioned earlier, is one pilot test for the sea field to put in these new double rows. And as you can see, this is the sea field, which by the way, sits between Bay Island and the Balboa Ferry Peninsula, a Balboa Peninsula ferry station. And there's no uniformity of boat lengths in these rows. You've got large vessels protruding into the fairway, there's 70-footers with 40-footers, there's six to seven boats that are actually outside the legal boundary of the field. And this mooring field really has actually a lot of space in it, may not look it because of the clutter of all the vessels. It's poor utilization of space. We can reconfigure this with double rows and open up these fairways. Boats will be spaced wider, on average, 50 to 55 feet on center. Again, the fairways will be 60 to 90 feet wide. Try and understand, you know, how nice that's going to be cruising through the harbor. And the row sizes will be reduced from seven boats, up to seven boats, down to five boats, plus we will create seven new long-term city moorings that can be added. Also, the big result of this is that we are creating, opening up, two acres of new open-water space. And as you can see along the main channel on the top portion, that's all new open water. Along the bottom, we're going to increase the channel width between the shoreline and the boats. These are substantial improvements. And the specifications, when this construction is done, if approved, would certainly be verified through this pilot test to make sure all the tolerances are correct as engineered and specified. This is another example of the B field, as I mentioned, by Balboa Island, and this is a pretty good example, because this mooring field, you know, if you're on the shoreline, you really can't see through this field in many spots at all, so there's a great benefit from aesthetics. But also, if you look at the field again, how poorly it's laid out, it's not a good utilization of space. The residents of Balboa Island have complained continually of safety in that channel because it's so narrow. Boats travel through there, there's swimmers, the Boat Parade actually travels through there as well. Once the reconfiguration is complete, you will see that the channel between shoreline and the mooring field is significantly increased. In fact, in one location, it's almost doubled in width. More space is just common sense, it's going to be safer. Plus, if you take a look at all the fairways between those rows, again, it will be aesthetically pleasing from the shoreline. We think it's a tremendous improvement, and we can also add eight new moorings to that field. Another just bird's-eye view of the J&amp;H field, earlier mentioned and referenced, again, the optimization would result in opening up the water space, this time between Lido Island and the boats, as well as making this entire area navigable to, you know, smallcraft duffies can safely travel through that mooring field. It'll be a much more pleasant experience. So we're taking a port utilization of space, improving it. We're taking the rows from 15 boats down to up to 11. Currently, fairways are less than 40 feet wide. They're all going to result at 60 to 90 feet wide. The navigation, as I said, will increase along Lido Island. And currently, this configuration, as all the mooring fields in our harbor are in non-compliance with harbor design standards. All the fields that will be optimized will be in full compliance with harbor design standards. As far as changes to the municipal code, Title 17, this just summarizes, the two top bullets are required to construct the double-row system, allowing that to occur, number one. Number two is defining a new mooring product that is non-transferable, allowing better public access to use over public tidelands. The rest of those bullets are necessary just in the maintenance of the fields and preventing from what's occurred in the past from recurring in the future, ending the concept that a mooring length can be extended without any policy or guidelines. We're creating an exchange process. If a mooring permitee does want to acquire a larger mooring, established rows, two-point moorings will require a spreader line to keep the buoys from floating out into the fairways. And it addresses harbor master authority to move vessels for safety reasons, as well as accommodating requests for the use of a single buoy system, which is often asked of us. That does not exist today. It's similar to what you have in Avalon at Catalina. We're in favor of that. And the current policy related to transferability for existing mooring permities remains unchanged. There's other inconsistencies. Finally, over the last two to three years, there have been numerous public meetings held on this subject matter, many stakeholder meetings, and at no less than 10 of these meetings has resulted in a full presentation, similar to what you're seeing today. We literally have received hundreds of comments and feedback from the public, which we greatly appreciate and would like to thank the public. We've taken all of those comments into consideration, and what was conceived originally as this project is substantially different today, based upon all that input. And the results in summary are, again, open-water space, which is critical, a big cleanup of the mooring fields with no cost to the existing mooring permities. Moorings will be relocated in the same field, like-for-like, we're practicable. We're going to accommodate all the prior mooring extension requests that came in, up to five feet, and there were about 10 of them. So we're accommodating those in the new design. More overall room, pretty much everywhere. We're expecting a lot fewer incidents involving propellers caught in mooring lines. It's a lot of duffies, that happens every month. Improved aesthetics, welcome addition of new moorings, making available to the public so that they will not require initial investment to put a boat on the harbor. And the costs for the mooring field optimization are recovered from the new mooring rental revenue to the city, and the additional revenues can be provided to the tidelands fund for harbor operations. And the fiscal impact of this is summarized here, where you can see that of the $410,000 that's being requested, $120,000 of it is actually going to the cost to reconfigure the sea field under this one pilot test that we're requesting. $70,000 of that is a capital improvement for construction of new moorings, again, which will have a 100% return on investment from the new mooring rental income over time. Eventually, we'll pay for the whole project. We have contingencies in there for supply chain, other contingencies. When this started, I think everybody knows what's happened with inflation and supply chains, and we don't know how long this will take, if it's approved. There's permitting that still needs to go through, so the last thing we want to do is come back and say, hey, prices have gone so up, it's outside the budget. We think we're well-funded with this and hope to come well below budget. The permits, you can see, they're, it's pretty basic, but it is consulting services for the process for SEQA, California Coastal Commission, as well as the actual costs of the permits. I do want to mention that of that spend, you can see, about half the spend is applicable to future mooring field optimizations. So, you know, once these consulting services are complete, once the field testing is done on the pilot program to make sure everything is working well and is safe and is as planned, we don't need to spend that money again, so it can be amortized over all the additional fields. And again, it will generate 100% ROI over time, it's bringing in new revenue, and the excess revenue will be nice to go to the tideland funds for harbor operations. The mooring field expense is a much-needed for new open-water space to the public, and the value of adding open-water space to a limited resource, truly, it's incalculable. And, oh, I did have to mention one thing, just for disclosure, if you don't mind, this is not an eye chart, but at the bottom, the important note, the overall estimates believed to be reasonable at the time created, once approval is obtained, firm quotations will be produced. So this open-water initiative is for the long-term preservation and enhancement of Newport Harbor, our most cherished asset. The initiative will benefit all the stakeholders and mariners of this harbor, which includes 9,000 boats in and adjacent to Newport Harbor, waterfront and local residents, mooring users, commercial operators, paddleboarders, young sailors, aquatic centers, and millions of annual visitors. The Harbor Commission voted unanimously in favor for the recommendation of what's being made here tonight and is reflected in this staff report that you have in front of you. As Vice Chair of the Harbor Commission, I respectfully request your support to approve this very first important step of Newport Harbor's open-water initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. What we're bringing up here first, we have any comments in council before we go out to public? Okay. We're going to go out to the public, and we have a lot of great emotion involved here, so I'm going to ask that there's no clapping and noise. You're more than welcome to raise your hand in the sky if you agree with something, but we like to keep a very reasonable type of peace. If you'd like to stand and wait in line to make comments, that would be very helpful so we can move this process along. And again, we'll keep this to about two minutes apiece. Thank you. Mr. Duffield.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor, and to the greatest staff, the greatest city in the United States. Thank you for listening to all this. I want to make sure you understand that this has been going on for a long time. This is not new. I was on the Harbor Commission for 10 years, and I was chairman of a subcommittee that worked on the boundaries of the mooring fields for seven years. A lot of people behind me helped me. They did most of the work. And so this is something that we've always tried to get going, but we didn't have a harbor department. Now we have a harbor department. And now with the Harbor Commission and the Harbor Department, the two can work together to really make the moorings, all of our mooring fields, everyone is on a fair, level playing field, and I can't tell you how proud I am of this gentleman here. He gets paid nothing and has worked tirelessly, I don't know how many thousands of hours, Ira, you have spent on this. But it's not just you, it's your subcommittee, it's the Harbor Commission, it's all of our staff helping. So this thing is the most fabulous improvement to our harbor that I can think of, and I'm just so grateful that you have come through and done this incredible project and laid it out. I think you've pretty much figured out everything, but the good news is, this is a test. So we're going to make some mistakes, and we'll learn about them, and then we'll correct them, and we'll go forward, and that's what it's for. So, thank you. I am grateful that you're all here, and I'm hoping we get this passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, my name is Dan Abbott. I'm a very fortunate resident of South Bayfront on Balboa Island, so my front yard is literally the subject that we're talking about right now. I would like to speak strongly in favor of the reconfiguration of mooring field C. I think it's a very important project and will add greatly, for all the reasons that have been explained, to our city. I have two areas that I very briefly like to address. One is the aesthetics. Again, this is my front yard. What we have right now is a mishmash of various sizes of boats. It's not efficient, it's not pretty, and at times, it's not safe. The reconfiguration would address all of those issues. Secondly, I'm an avid kayaker. I kayak around both islands, five days out of seven on average, and it's not infrequent that I either get pushed to the side, almost swamped, or on one occasion, I was swamped, and it's not fun. It's not only the aesthetics, but it's also the safety. I'll oftentimes hear a boat coming up behind me and yell to swimmers that I see in front of me, and there's just simply not enough room right now. This proposal would address that and take care of it adequately. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm Barbara Abbott, Dan's wife, and I'd just like to say, I think this program has been thought about so carefully, so carefully researched. We are thrilled. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Honorable Mayor Blum and City Council Members, my name is Dennis Dergan. As a 62-year resident of Newport Beach and a former harbor master, and current realtor selling high-end properties around our wonderful harbor, I fully endorse the Harbor Commission's recommendation to the City Council with regard to the mooring field open-water initiative. Tonight, I'm here representing the Newport Harbor Foundation as chairman. The foundation was created for the purpose of preserving, protecting, and enhancing Newport Harbor for the benefit of the city of Newport Beach, the homeowners on or near the bay, the commercial operators in the bay, and the recreational users of the bay. The foundation's founders, contributors, and members are made up of individuals and businesses who have long history of using and enjoying the harbor and a vested interest in the enhancement and preservation for use by current and future generations. This evening, you are reviewing and hopefully acting on a recommendation by the Harbor Commission to take the first steps in reducing the size, improving the safety, and enhancing the appearance of the offshore mooring fields. With your approval of the Harbor Commission's recommendations, we'll also serve to open up the waters of Newport Harbor for the benefit of all its users. Specifically, the recommendations will better define the mooring field rows, which will make navigating them safer and more uniform by placing like-size boats in the same rows instead of the current random placement. They will widen the fairways and make them uniform, which will provide for easier and safer navigation for the mooring permities and other users of the harbor, such as kayakers, paddleboarders, sabbats, and other smallcraft, such as electric boats. They will significantly enhance the appearance of the mooring fields in the land areas around the bay, including the bayfront homes, beaches, and parks. As council members, this decision is straightforward. There is no downside. The Newport Harbor Foundation consists of residents of Newport Beach, active yachtsmen, and individuals that spend a great deal of time on the bay. The Newport Harbor Foundation strongly recommends that you adopt the Harbor Commission's recommendation and approve the mooring field reconfigurations as proposed. Thank you for your service to our great city and for your vote in favor of the Harbor Commission recommendations.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Hein Austin. Slideshow number one, please. As we consider this a major change, we need to consider fundamental questions. America's Cup Harbor versus Newport Beach Harbor. Is America's Cup Harbor more protected or less protected against currents than Newport Harbor? Harbor, the harbor with, America's Cup Harbor is a harbor within a harbor. Please note the big breakwater at the entrance of America's Cup Harbor. The prevailing currents move past the entrance there, and so the water is mostly moving vertical, up or down, as opposed to sideways, which impairs the boaters, mooring boaters. Slideshow number two, please. Is America's Cup Harbor more protected or less protected against wind? This topographical map, and I also want to draw your attention to the flyer that I handed out, a topographical map that you should see in to the flyer that I handed out, a topographical map that you should see in front of you, indicates that Point Loma Heights, which is the area to the left between the ocean and America's Cup Harbor from where the wind, prevailing wind comes, is an elevation of 300 feet high. That's twice the height of Hope Hospital. Also consider the fact that the landmass between the ocean and America's Cup Harbor is over a mile wide. Yet in Newport Beach, everything is at sea level and the peninsula is probably about 600 feet wide, which gives Newport Beach Harbor a serious disadvantage in comparison with America's Cup Harbor. Slide show number, slide number three, please. How does San Diego Harbor arrange their moorings in the open mooring fields? We're not talking about America's Cup Harbor where everybody can be jammed together. This is what they do in San Diego. They leave enough room around every boat, 360 degrees safety zone, so that those boats not make contact under the weather conditions to which they are exposed. Title changes eight times a day.
I'll give you 10 seconds if you could.
Thank you. There's, also I'd like to point out slide show number four. That's the, the mooring field down by the Corona del Mar, Corona Bridge, straight lines, nice and nicely organized, but they all have a lot of room around them. They will not dare to put that model that they put in America's Cup Harbor in their open field, mooring fields for the fact that, because mooring boaters need room to navigate safely, especially sailboaters.
Thank you.
I have more to say. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name's Dick Andrews. I'm a live aboard on J-210 Newport Harbor. Newport Harbor isn't only my home, it is my office. I'm a boat mechanic. I fix boats. I go to work in a dinghy instead of a car. I do not like the new proposal that they're doing. And my boat weighs 52,000 pounds. It doesn't stop once it's moving easily. With a boat in front of me 20 or 30 feet, it makes it a lot more difficult safely get on my mooring. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Honorable Mayor Bloom, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak for you tonight. I'll speak quickly. I had a three-minute presentation. I'll try to keep to two. I'm Jim Palmer, a lifetime active harbor user and holder of my mooring permit number D-10 since June of last year. I fully support testing of a new mooring system configuration. However, I strongly oppose the underlying changes to the Harbor Code Title 17. Commissioner Beer, you read earlier tonight, I think my first presentation slide, which talks about the transferability of all existing moorings remains unchanged.
That's consistent.
Staff report is consistent with the presentation materials that you've repeatedly shown at the Harbor Commissioner meetings as well. Item two here is an extract of Attachment D, Pages Three of the Agenda Packet, that clearly shows that there are changes. That there are changes to Title 17. Page three, it says, "Permittee Transfer Qualifications. Mooring Permit May Be Held By Only A Natural Person Unless The Mooring Permit Is Transferable, In Which Case It Must Be Held By Interested Transfer To Only To The Following." Item D says, "Immediate Family, Which Shall Mean The Mooring Permit To A Spouse And Heirs At-Law To The Second Degree." After numerous viewings of the Commissioner's PowerPoint presentation, I believe this is the first showing in this room of the actual changes to Title 17. Presentation, I support, I support the obligation to harbor, but I'm a bit baffled how we got to the stage today without public vetting of those changes and how the impact, which will alter 75 years of mooring transfer policies and practices. Hope is now you've seen it, I hope you can't resist.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Ten, ten seconds more?
Let's, let's not make this a pattern, but sure.
Sure. Well, the final exhibit is just perspective, what, what transferability means. 2017, the city has facilitated 556 mooring permit transfers, of which 380 were an open market between non-family members. Paid over $12.4 million to freely transfer. That's just in 2017. Go back a legacy of decades in this program. And there's a lot of investment out there that's just gets wiped away tonight if you vote yes. So I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Michael Lawler. I live on Balboa Island, 120 and a half Coral Avenue. Lived in Newport Beach all my life, 70 years. I own a, I'm a permittee for a mooring in the D Field, D-9, where I keep my 47-foot sailboat traveler. It looks to me like this is going to get approved. So I want to cut to the chase here, which is following up on what Mr. Jim Palmer just said. It looks like swept in with the rest of this open water initiative is some changes to Title 17 that I think we really need to focus on. One, it, the bullet point number five says, "Future new mooring permits issued will be non-transferable." My concern is that the choice of words there, I mean, what does that really mean? It could be interpreted to mean that a mooring permit, permittee can sell it once, but then the buyer cannot resell it. I mean, what's a new mooring permittee? And when, when does it become non-transferable? The other thing is on paragraph 3D, if you look to paragraph 3D, it changes the definition of who you can transfer it to. Instead of a person that's a, owns a vessel, it says, "Immediate family, which shall mean the mooring permittee spouse and heirs at law in the second degree." So if you can only transfer it to your own family, it's really changing how a mooring permit can be transferred. I think that needs to be addressed and not just swept in with the rest of this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Chris Bliss. I'm a mooring owner. And in fact, I have a mooring in the Seafield. I've been there for 30 years. I have to say that I've never been aware of any kind of safety issue regarding other vessels or swimmers or anything in the Seafield. One thing I'd like to say is that the currents are often so strong there, often exceeding five knots, that if the boats are put any closer together and we adopt this double mooring idea, I think it's going to be really, really hazardous for people getting on and off their moorings. I also like to just point out, I've been sailing for 50 years. I've been, I've sailed from New England down to the Florida Keys, all the way down to Puerto Vallarta, Mexico on the West Coast. I've never seen this type of double-row mooring field anywhere, like literally nowhere. And there's a very good reason for that. It's very, very difficult to navigate. And I think it's going to be dangerous for mariners and for boaters. And I strongly request that you reject the whole idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Captain James Haley. I've written two letters already on this issue. And I only here to address the safety and the boat handling issue. However you dress it up, the proposal moves two, two rows of boats closer than they currently are. And I would also say that wind and current is always the issue in boat handling. I've been sailing and I was in a merchant marine. I was a harbor pilot. Whether it's a 1,200-foot container ship or a Hobycat, every problem I've had in, in my sailing career has involved wind and current. And when you move those two rows closer together, you will complicate the problem. It will make it more difficult to get on and off the mooring. And so it, it may work in America's Cup Harbor, but as previously said, in terms of wind and current, Newport Bay and America's Cup Harbor are not comparable. And so that's really all I had to say is sailors have to deal with wind and current and quite a bit of it in Newport Bay. And it looked to me like the Noble Report is relatively silent on wind and current. It talks a lot about anchors, and I'm not an expert about anchors. But I don't believe that it will be safer with this new configuration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm John Fradkin. I'm a mooring permittee and I'm also a board member of the Newport Mooring Association. The proposed plan, as stated, compromises greatly on boating safety. I'd like to refer you to the previous speaker's letter dated May 20th, which cites the majority of the problems quite eloquently. The proponents of this plan argue that because they have increased distances in three dimensions, that their layout is safer than the current layout. This is a ludicrous argument and shows a real misunderstanding of the challenges in approaching or departing a mooring. When boats are 20 feet apart instead of 60 feet apart, and the combined effects of wind and tide are pushing your boat towards the paired boat more just 20 feet away, vessel operators will have one-third as much time as they currently have to prevent a collision. The wind and tide do not care about all that extra space in the three other directions. The Newport Mooring Association has tried to educate the Harbor Commission on the nuances of getting on and off of the moorings in the river-like environment, which is Newport Harbor, but they don't seem to be able to comprehend our points. Instead, we get the same three stock answers, which are, number one, you have to check the weather before you attempt to moor your boat. Number two, you have to be competent in operating your boat. And number three, change is hard. They love saying that. Those are not adequate responses. And I don't think this, this plan has changed really at all since it was originally proposed. The mooring fields are designated by the U.S. Coast Guard as special anchorages. This means that moored boats in the special anchorages do not have to be lit at night. Contained in the very definition of special anchorages is the wording, "The areas so designated shall be well removed from the fairways and located where general navigation will not endanger or be endangered by unlighted vessels." Fairways are meant to go around special anchorages and not cut through them. The Harbor Commission has continuously referred to the mooring fields as navigable water. And I believe this to be wrong as per U.S. Coast Guard definition of the special anchorages. The primary use in the special anchorage is to moored boats. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Honorable, Honorable Mayor and Council. Norm McLeod, C-83 mooring holder. I mirror a lot of the opposition to this program, the whole opportunity to, to squeeze more boats into a size of an area that really is densifying the moorings, making it less safe. Current, wind, things of that nature, being an avid boater myself, 38-foot heavy, you know, heavy displacement cutter, you get pushed around quite a bit. And moving in and out of the boat, out of the mooring, I should say, it can be dangerous at times, even when it's in the space that you have now. So Seafield is definitely exposed to a lot of currents and winds. Maybe other parts of the mooring area that could be more densified, I don't know. I don't know well enough to, to really justify my argument for that. But overall, the whole idea of really densifying this project, only one place in California, in the, the America's Cup Harbor exhibits this sort of design. That's a hard sell. You know, it's not a broad brush, broad implemented type program. It's very site-specific. And it's somewhat apples and oranges, if you will. I'm also opposed to the other items that are baked into this Title 18, I think it's 18, to revise, you know, transferability and such. I think that needs to be explored a little more deeply. A lot of questions on definitions and scopes and scale of what we're proposing here tonight. Really like to avoid bundling everything together and just doing one fell swoop approval. So definitely to reconsider maybe parsing out those items for further discussion, further analysis. And absolutely opposed to the mooring configuration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Senator Creston, mooring permittee. I know I've mentioned this before, but when you look at an overall aerial view of Newport Harbor, you will notice that 99% of the boats are all facing the same direction. In this plan, they will not be facing the same direction. They'll be facing each other bow-to-bow, which is very dangerous. And there's a reason you don't want to be in a sailboat with no bow thrusters, stirr and thrusters, twin screws, trying to get your boat onto a mooring when the wind's pushing behind, is winds behind you, the tide's behind you, and you're about ready to run into the boat that you're bow-to-bow with. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Bloom and the City Council. My name is George Hilkema. I've had a seawitch catch on mooring C-81 for 30 years and have been a board member of the NMA for 25 years. I have sent a one-page summary to this council, to the city manager, and to the mooring permit holders of my concerns on the double-row mooring plan that has been under development by the Harbor Commission. I will not repeat the contents of that document. And I, and I and two other NMA board members have already enjoyed meeting with Councilman Avery and Councilwoman Clemmon on the subject. They were kind enough to read over the document and to consider those concerns. The most concerning issue, as expressed by the NMA and many mooring permit holders individually, is the matter of safety. To our knowledge and research, there is really no safety issue with the current mooring layout, and it has worked for over 100 years. The double boat, boat plan, on the other hand, while promoting a safety improvement, shows up to the NMA as a safety concern, just because the paired vessels may be 22 feet apart, while the present layout has been about 45 feet. So the question is, is having now a paired boat 22 feet apart safer than the present layout with 45 feet? That's an easy answer. The Harbor Commission designed for this plan started with a single screw-in anchor system, which was to be the city-owned and maintained. This has evolved to now the use of the present permit holder-owned weight chain and buoy. There is a detailed description of this. If there is a detailed description of this proposed design, it has not been made available. One might observe that the present system complies with the harbor master's requirements for chain size and weight, weight of the iron securing the chain.
Thank you.
Again, what are the details of the proposed pilot project? What are the goals and the project and the questions to be answered? I believe the City Council has the duty to require these details, as well as a competent coastal engineering review of the design and how it will work operationally. Funds should be provided for this coastal engineering review of the proposed design test plan before spending $410,000 for a pilot program.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker.
Good evening, council members. My name is Charles Levy. I'm a mooring permittee in Row B. And in the past 13 years that I've been there, I've seen a lot of the windstorms actually move a lot of the mooring weights and the boats. I feel that the two-boat, or two-row system that I'm thinking of is not necessary. I think you just need to relocate and set up all the mooring weights and more, and cans where they were supposed to be. And if you just realign everything, you'll get the fairways between the boats and the, and the land more wider, and everything will be in much more even configuration. And also, as other persons said, if you have, boats are not meant to be going through the rows of the moorings. They're supposed to be going around it. So I don't think you need all that extra fairing space between them. And putting the two boats together that close definitely makes very hazardous, especially in Newport Harbor, which is totally different than the America's Cup Harbor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Drew Colome, holder of C-95, the end tie 55 feet. I'm planning on buying a bigger boat within the next few months. I'm going to speak from experience only. I have a license to navigate the most experienced waters in Maui, which is currents. So I toe-surf over in Maui. And I'm looking at C-95 with the currents and the winds that I get to face regularly on that boat, watching it go by. And I think if I had two boats tied up next to me and a current, and now you have a, a field that's even wider, so people can zoom in and out, it's not going to leave us much time to set up and get ready for, you know, the tie. There's no way, there's no way to produce a, a safer entry for me to get into. It's impossible if I'm tied up to next somebody else. It's, it's impossible. It, the depth of the, and the currents and the winds that we're facing there are definitely going to be different. going to be different. The article's wrong, and I don't care about the eelgrass. Nobody does here. Nobody cares. So I'm going to speak from my experience. Nobody cares. You know why? Because I've been surfing out in Newport, and they're shoving a pipe with shit coming out at the kids, and you don't do anything until I say something. And the fire department finally takes it and says, hey, you know what? I think it's right. There is shit going out there, and it stinks. So I've been here a long time. I'm going to speak from my truth. If you care about the eelgrass, let's talk about it. If you care about the winds and the currents, let's talk about it. I'm cared about safety. I would like to get my NTI, but that's not important. I want truth. I'm irritated that there's not truth here, and you can see it.
Next speaker.
I've got my phone here to set it on two minutes.
You have a timer in front of you as well.
I've got a lot to say. I'm going to try as hard as I can. So I'm going to hit the start button. Is that okay? All right. So anyway, my name's Scott Carlin. I'm an attorney. I'm also a member of the NMA Board. I wanted to thank the Harbor Commission, City Attorney's Office, for all the work they've put into this, quite a bit, and for counsel also. I'm only going to speak to the title changes. That's all. I don't want to speak to the other issues. First, you don't need to do the changes to the title in order to run the test. So we should be clear about this. We should go nice and slow on the title changes. So I worked and presented my versions over time, and I've seen a lot of that has been incorporated. That's fantastic, and I'd like to work some more. There's three issues real quick that need a little touch-up. One is the transferability language. There's a little ambiguity in there, easily fixed. Two, the criteria for moving boats on and off by the Harbor Master. It says navigational concerns needs to be tweaked a little bit, i.e., it's vague. So we just need to put some parameters on it. If it's longer than a certain number of days or months, then it goes to the Harbor Commission. They got to okay the extended move, and if it goes more than a year, say, it's got to go to the council. Small fixes. Third thing is, there is a reference to established row length, but there's no procedures for the Harbor Commission and ultimately the City Council to say, oh, yeah, we like this, and for input from everybody. Say, no, that isn't, that's a little bit awkward. We need a little bit more 50s or 40s or whatever. That's missing. So all I'm saying in the ask is fairly simple, is we need a little more time to work with the city attorney in order to tweak it so it's a better document. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Blum and City Councilmembers. My name is Jerry LaPointe. I am a Newport Beach resident and a mooring permittee in the D Field, D-12, and I'm also an NMA board member. You have heard from those opposed and those that support the Harbor Commission's proposal. I can say with great confidence that those that are the frontline stakeholders would be close to 100% opposed to this plan, given its safety concerns. The NMA supports a better mooring field. We believe there's a more effective plan that's less radical, disruptive, costly, and potentially safer than what is in front of you today. The Harbor Master was recently quoted, saying that the Harbor Commission has worked on this for three years, and however, the public was not made aware of it until mid-year, mid-last year. They've had numerous stakeholder meetings, taken, listened to all the concerns that you heard tonight, but no meaningful changes have been made to the plan. We have also made changes to Title 17 that Scott spoke about, and we've offered a redline, and none of those comments were introduced into the document. I would ask the City Council to consider the following six questions. Why is the plan that is so radical and a change in the harbor that we haven't seen for decades being pushed forward without further review for safety, given it's been raised so aggressively? Why didn't the Harbor Commission work with the NMA and stakeholders two years ago, or when they started this process, to figure out a better plan that would be supported by everybody? What is the total cost of the project? If it's 400 grand for the first field, what will it be for every subsequent field? I don't believe that you're not going to have to have engineers that are going to plot, test every field, because I think they're different. What does success look like? What determines if this pilot program is successful? We haven't heard what the requirements are to meet your standards or the city's standards for being success, for a successful program.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Councilmembers, my name's Glenn Otis. I'm a trial lawyer here in Newport Beach, and I would like to submit to you that the court has already ruled on whether the city of Newport Beach can do this or not. As you know, they've already accepted in writing with our permits the size of the mooring and the location, and the city's agreed to that and even made money on it. So can the city take away someone's mooring and relocate them in a different, different area or put them in a different-sized mooring? I again submit the court has ruled on this. There was a case years ago where there used to be a waiting list for moorings to occur, and someone sued the city of Newport Beach and won. The court ruled that the city can administer state tidelands waters, but it must be done in a fair manner. They can't discriminate one tidelands user against another, and he won. And if you do decide to take away someone's mooring, where it sits and the length of it, and don't have those same requirements for people that have homes with their boats right in front of them, no one's going to go to Lido Island and say, this boat can't be there, or you, somebody can't be on this boat or wherever. That's not going to happen, and for good reason, because they would not allow it. Yet they sit in the same tidelands water as do the moorings. With all of these cases, the courts always look to, is there, is there another way to achieve this without this taking under the 14th Amendment? And what they always look for is, is there an easier way to do it? The stated purpose for the city was to raise revenue. I submit, go buy your own moorings and rent them out for whatever you want to, just like we had to do. You'll get the same result, you'll end up with the moorings that you want, without taking anything else from somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Kenny Hatch, permittee in the Notorious J section, as Mr. Beer likes to refer to us. You've heard a lot of great comments here tonight, and they were, they were all really good. There was, I think, one, one person came up and actually spoke for the plan, as, well, two, if you, if you count Mr. Duffy. It just doesn't make sense. You take a look real quick, all the boats face one way. We want to turn half of them around. It's been this way for 100 years. Why is it going to be okay to turn them the wrong way now? It's, it's not. America's Cup Harbor is, see, that, that's misleading right there, because America's Cup is more like a marina. It's not really a harbor. It's nothing like Newport Harbor. It's, it's a big marina, I'll give it that, and it works well down there, the system does. But it really hasn't been examined properly by the commission here. Ira, you gave a great presentation. I almost started thinking some of it was good ideas until I thought about it for a minute, okay? It's just, please. Everybody, you heard a lot of great comments. I don't need to repeat all that stuff. Just take the urgency out of this thing and think about it a little bit before you vote, okay? Like, next time or the time after that, not tonight. Think about it, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you. My name is Bill Powers. I'm a resident in Newport Beach and a mooring owner, excuse me, mooring lessor. A couple of questions, and you could see, this is actually a comm meeting as to some past ones that we've had. Safety is the issue, guys. It, excuse me, commissioners, safety is the issue here, plain and simple. We keep referring to this America's Cup Harbor. We've commissioned a study, or the Newport Mooring Association has, with a PhD from Scripps, who's looked at tides, currents. It's apples and oranges. It was said it's a harbor within a harbor. It is a harbor within a harbor. If I put a tennis ball in the front of my boat, by the time I go back to retrieve, and it's only a 48-foot boat, by the time I go back to retrieve that line, the tennis ball is all the way, it's passed. In this new configuration, where we're face-to-face, it's enormously dangerous, enormously, especially if you're in the middle of that row. Sailboats with one engine to make that turn, try and imagine yourself doing a 10-point turn, and many of you have been boaters. Now, when we listened to the previous discussion by the Harbor Commission, it looked like a panacea. It couldn't be better. But use your common sense. How do you get 50% more boats in an area 40% less? Just use your sense. It doesn't make sense. But what's the solution? We've got to clean up the harbor. We've got to make it more navigable for everybody. On a Sunday afternoon, it's crazy out there. I would suggest to you, if everyone used sandlines, if Harbor Commissioner Paul Blank and his team, and they're a good team, and they're courteous and they're professional, if they would insist that sandlines are used, if we just simply realigned where the original moorings were supposed to be. Now get out to San Diego, go into America's Harbor. You know how many harbors, or do you know how many they have in San Diego? Dozens. How many use this design? One, you cannot put this design out in the harbor, and that harbor is much calmer than ours. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Blum, and esteemed members of our City Council. My name is Steve Scully, and I'm the current chairman of the Harbor Commission. I'm a current resident and boat owner for 30-plus years. I'm going to make this as brief as I can. In March, the Harbor Commission unanimously approved this initiative, and we recommend that you approve this resolution tonight. This initiative will open the waterways in our harbor. It will improve safety for human-powered sailing, electric powerboats. It'll clean up the haphazard alignment of the mooring rows. It'll improve views for homeowners and users of our harbor. It will provide space for future moorings without significant upfront costs as there is today. It will be consistent with the current and future development of our harbor. I know that this change is difficult, and it is on the mooring permittees, but let's state the facts. This initiative calls for a one-time exchange of the mooring holder's location within the same field. This ocean, open water initiative is supported by homeowners, Newport Beach residences, businesses that operate on the water, and your Harbor Commission. Approving this resolution will make our harbor better for more than 7 million people that utilize and visit our harbor on an annual basis. I also like to weigh in on safety, and yes, I believe the first rule of safety is the captain is responsible for his crew and his vessel, and if the weather's condition is a concern to the captain, then that, that cruise or mission should be canceled. The open water initiative provides more space. It provides for additional angles to pick up and drop moorings, and I believe it is safer and will offer more options to deal with wind, tides, or conditions, particularly compared to putting a boat into a slip. In conclusion, there's nothing like Newport Harbor on the West Coast. The harbor is one of the crown jewels of this city, and it is our responsibility to preserve and improve it. The seven members of your Harbor Commission are all focused on making Newport Harbor better, and we ask that you approve this resolution and begin the process to open the water in our harbor. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. My name is Douglas Karstens. I'm an attorney with Karstens Black &amp; Minter. I'm here on behalf of the Newport Mooring Association. I'm also a Navy veteran. I'm not here for that, but I actually was trained down in San Diego Bay on those yard craft. I went to Surface Warfare Officer School. But again, I'm not here as some Navy expert. I'm here as an attorney, unfortunately. I'm here to object to the approval of the mooring pilot program and associated municipal code changes without first conducting required environmental review and obtaining a coastal development permit. We've submitted letters November 8th, it's at page 74 of your staff report. We also submitted one March 7th, it's at page 398 of your staff report, and we're just here to underscore or highlight some of those points. The city may not proceed without a coastal development permit from the Coastal Commission. That's clear from page five of the staff report. So we know the city will apply for a coastal development permit, and we appreciate that for the implementing the test program. I would suggest not doing the municipal code changes until that application goes in or is approved, and you learn a lot of lessons from the test program. That's what a test program is for. The project is not exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA, because it will have environmental impacts related to public access to the water, aesthetics, and construction of new moorings or relocation of the existing tackle. The staff report claims that this is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as a replacement or reconfiguration, but it's clear this is intensifying the usage. It'll create visual and public safety impacts by adding additional moorings, among other things. Visual impacts, I think people have talked about. As a matter of fact, people talked about most all of these points, so I really encourage you to look at the letter we submitted at noon today and regard the proposed changes as subject to SEQA, not exempt from it, and wait for that coastal development permit to really make permanent changes to your code. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Councilmembers, my name's Tony Fedorick. I'm a Newport Beach, Newport Beach resident and a permit owner. A lot of people have made some great points, and I agree with a lot of them. My personal concern is approaching, my vessel is designed to go into the wind, bow into the wind, right? If I get turned around and the wind is coming at my stern, not only is it a concern when I'm approaching and getting off my mooring, but it's also when I'm stationary. When the winds are high, as it is, my mooring has been moved by the winds, and that's with me bow into the wind. Turn me around, put my stern into the wind, it's not designed to take wind in that way. I don't know what's going to hold my boat in place. Also, a lot of our canopies, our eyes and glass, aren't designed to be taking wind from the stern. A lot of sailboats have open, basically, throughways of wind that would get caught by the wind. The back of my boat is snub, and my eyes and glass will get torn apart. Then if you take into consideration getting off and mooring, if we do make it more navigable waterways, seeing who's behind me if I'm going to back out, if we have more paddleboarders, swimmers, that's a concern. Right now, not having that as a throughway for Duffy's paddleboard, paddleboards, and the alike, I think makes it actually safer than opening that up, because now I have people to be concerned about. Somebody pulls up behind me after I've dropped my lines, now I have to navigate myself in place until that person leaves before I can get out safely. So I think there is a lot of valid concerns, and that happens to be one of my biggest concerns, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yes, my name is Dave Lambert. I have a mooring in the H Field. Just two comments that were made earlier, that you don't go out on a sail if the weather's bad. What happens when you're coming in and the weather happens to be changeable? Happens all the time, every day. Second issue is, is that the mooring fields, as we refer to them, are really anchorage areas defined by the Coast Guard, which a gentleman brought earlier, that allow for trans, travel in that area. In the last two years, I've had at least four boats ding my, the hull on my boat, causing relatively serious damage, expensive anyways. So having free travel through the moorings is not a good idea anyways. Opening up the fairways is not something you should be doing in the anchorage area anyways. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Mayor Blum, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I am neither a boater nor a waterfront homeowner, except on the back bay, where I do face a water that's not navigable to, or not allowed for boats for the most part. But I do have two questions about this, because we've heard what you're asked to approve tonight as a pilot or a test program, which I assume must be leading towards a longer-range program, and I apologize if I'm not understanding this correctly, but Title 17 is not something easy to read, and so I'm unclear and don't find it clearly explained in the staff report what that longer-range goal is. The first question is, I see on page 15-41, our existing code has some The first question is, I see on page 15-41, our existing code has some exemptions or exceptions in it. It has one exception for yacht clubs. There are two yacht clubs that enjoy an exception of some kind. I cannot tell from reading Title 17 how broad that exception is. So will any of these changes that are being proposed tonight apply to those two yacht clubs, or are they immune from that? So will all of the harbor be reorganized, or just the non-yacht club parts? And the second question I have is, we've heard that there's a plan to make the mooring permits non-transferable. I personally think that's a good idea. I don't think they should be privately transferable, but I don't see a lot in here about how those new non-transferable permits are going to be handled. Is the city going into the business of owning the tackle and renting out spaces and tackle? Who qualifies for the new permits? How is that going to be handled? I don't see that spelled out in any of its revisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? Wonderful. Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back up to council. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I have a few questions based on some of the comments that we were hearing. So first off, thank you. I do appreciate it. I know that some of these meetings can get fairly contentious. This wasn't, just wanted to say thanks. I know that, and I do appreciate the thoughtfulness in the written comments and the oral ones. I'm going to ask about a handful of the ones that I heard, so give me just a second. So one of the, let's talk Title 17 changes first. So the first one, and maybe this is a Paul question, as we're kind of working this through. So the discussions about transferability, you know, how do you see the changes working? Because I didn't read it, the resolution or the modifications quite the same way some of the folks came up here, but with a permit number, when it's transferred, how does that work, and does that create a new permit?
Good evening, and thank you for your question, Mayor Protem. The language in the ordinance is specific to, or references, all existing mooring permits in existence prior to the passage of this ordinance, in case it does, will remain transferable. And the Harbor Department's process, as it is today, and whether you pass this or not, is a mooring permit is a mooring permit is a mooring permit is a mooring permit in perpetuity until either revoked or, revoked or, sorry, there's another word, but--
Surrendered.
Surrendered, thank you very much. So an existing mooring permit will remain transferable until revoked or rescinded. If, and it's a big F, if new moorings are created as a result of this pilot program or rollout and furtherance of the program, those new, the permits for those new moorings will have different transferability, or essentially be non-transferable. And so the city will maintain them. The permits will remain in the name of the city, and the city will be able to lease those moorings out. The lessees will have no right to that permit. Once they have finished using it, it will roll onto another permutee, or lessie, actually.
Okay. So there's a guy here earlier, I think he may have left, who was talking about having C-95, and he has a specific permit. If he transfers it, that person keeps the same number, so you know, it's not a new permit. So that person can then transfer, and that person can then transfer it, and it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with the code changes we're making right now.
Correct. So that mooring C-95 is a permit in perpetuity and transferable in perpetuity.
Okay. And then I'm not sure if this is an Aaron question or a Paul question, but the discussion that came up toward the end there with Jim about the yacht club exemptions, what's, how do you read that?
I'm happy to take that one, because I have some familiarity with the situation. The two mooring fields that are designated for Newport Harbor Yacht Club and Balboa Yacht Club are not affected in any way by any of this pilot program or any rollout of this program further than the Seafield. Those two mooring fields will not be affected by this program.
By the trial.
Or any extension of it, should it be extended in the future.
Okay. And then there was, there's, by the way, it seems like there were a lot of lawyers in the audience talking today, which is nice. Hello, Mr. Otis, where were you? Oh, he's gone. I would just point out, I know Mr. Otis' bar number, and I checked it, and I'd ask, I was going to ask him if he's still a practicing lawyer, or if he calls himself a trial lawyer, but anyway, different question. So the, so on this one, one of the folks got up and asked about the established row length language. How does that, how will that play out?
The population of existing moorings and their lengths has been assessed on several surveys and provided to the engineers. The engineers will guide us in determining, based on that population of existing moorings of existing lengths, what the best arrangement for them is. That information will be fed to GIS, and then a program will be carried out to actually move the moorings into that configuration based on the engineering.
And so eventually, but eventually, I mean, with the established row length, that would actually have a legal terminology within our code that's being changed, if I understood that correctly. Or am I, I've got to go back and look, but I was trying to remember what the public comment on that item was. Maybe I can do a quick search in my, but I guess the question at that point is, let me just a moment. I'm not seeing it.
I believe for the purpose of size exchange requests, there is a reference to established row lengths.
Who made the public comment about established? Could you come up for a second? So I want to make sure I understood your point. Were you referencing a specific, were you referencing code language, or were you, what were you referencing when you talked about established row lengths?
Correct. The entire plan references established row lengths. However, there's no procedure in place in the code to say, okay, here's the, here's the concept, and then it goes--
All right. Do you have a, do you have a specific language, like a page reference I could look at to see what the changes are?
Boy, I don't have a computer. I can't do a search. It is, Paul's correct. It's in the language about exchanging. But the whole concept was, and you saw it from the maps, we're going to have these row lengths, but it's a simple point, and I think it can be tweaked. That's all I'm saying, is there just needs to be a little more work on the changes of Title 17 to allow the procedure to go to either the Harbor Commission and then ultimately the council, saying, here's it, and then gets public input about the suggested new lengths in rows. It's a very simple point, and there's a very simple solution. It just needs a little tweaking, is all. Same thing with the transferability--
Yeah, sorry. I'm actually, if you could find that, if you find that while you're sitting there, could you just raise your hand? It's okay.
I'll find it, and I'll raise my hand.
That'd be great. Thanks. Do you have the, can we put the presentation back up, and specifically the slide that shows current existence on mooring, on the mooring field C? Yeah, that one. Okay. So one of the questions, so one of the comments that I had heard from folks was that, you know, when they, when we're looking at San Diego's harbor, there's, there were fields there, and they had 360-degree, but we've, we don't have that. Do we?
We do. Those are the yacht club fields, and that's why they are not affected by this--
Got it. But not the, but field C isn't.
Correct.
Got it. And then, one of the, one of the gentlemen was talking, came up toward, toward the end and was referencing, you know, not wanting to have clear, not wanting to have clear fairways. I'm not sure I understand why that would, why, why, why? So what's the thought process behind not wanting clear fairways?
As I understand it, the mooring permittees would prefer to not have more traffic or ability for traffic to transit through their mooring fields. And therefore, less clear fairways would mean less traffic in their mooring fields.
So when I'm looking, so I'm looking at, so between C4 and C3, for example, in this picture, we've got at the very top there, one boat that's pretty far out in the fairway, the second boat in the fairway, third boat, looks like it's in the fairway. That is preferential for some people?
Because it promotes less traffic around their vessel.
Okay. Huh. All right. And then one of the other, one of the other issues that, so the, one of the other things that was being brought up is, let's go to the next slide to the, let's go to the, advance it. Yeah, that one. So one of the concerns some folks are raising is the idea that they would have to go bow-to-bow. Does it, do they have to go in that way, or is it, or are we, could they go in the other direction? I mean, how's, wouldn't it, wouldn't they?
There is no language anywhere that requires a vessel to orient itself on its mooring in any specific orientation. All mooring, all people attempting to retrieve their mooring should do so in the most safe manner possible, and that would, in most cases, lead towards a bow, towards the wind orientation, whether you are on an odd-numbered row or an even-numbered row. And I'd point out, as an example, in America's Cup Harbor, about 75% of the boats on those double-row moorings are oriented in the westerly direction, the prevailing wind direction. About 25% of those boats are oriented in the other direction. Those 25% probably retrieve their mooring in conditions that were suitable for that. As a matter of fact, I happened to do a survey on the sea mooring field today while providing a tour to some of my colleagues, and I noted that three of the 30, or let's just call it 10%, three of the 30 vessels in that mooring field today are oriented to the east, the 27 are oriented to the west. There is no obligation to orient a boat on a mooring in either direction. And in fact, most mooring permittee, no, I'm sorry, I can't say that. A significant number of mooring permittees deliberately reverse their orientation to achieve sun exposure on both sides evenly.
Yeah. And then, I guess the last question. So when I'm looking at the, this same slide here, one of the questions I've been trying to kind of, I was working through up here, was on a pilot test of the field C, given that you're starting from small to large, I imagine, I assume that means that you'd have to pilot test the whole field. You couldn't parcel out and try different areas of the field.
You are essentially correct. It happens to be that we will do one corner of the field, just to get the spacing right and the tackle downright, and make sure that it sticks, but the pilot program is for the entirety of the field.
Okay. And then, Aaron, last, last question. The, one of the discussion points that was coming up toward the end there was a question of SEQA. I mean, I know that our city doesn't just skimp over this issue. It's not like it's just a copy and paste, and we don't, you know, we don't consider the issue, but could you at least assure us that, you know, your office has looked at this? You feel confident with the proposal as it stands from an environmental side?
Yeah, we do. You know, the exemption that we're using is basically for replacing the same facilities in the same location for the same purpose, and that's exactly what's happening here. And SEQA has a bunch of exceptions that apply, and we took a look at those, and we don't think any of those exceptions are applicable in this circumstance. And I think more importantly, we did take a look at the eelgrass and did some other analysis, just to make sure that there wouldn't be some unintended consequences, and I feel real good that we've looked at it from a SEQA perspective, and that we'll be able to move forward.
All right. And then I'm looking out in the front row. It looks like Mr. Mosher was helping out, which, good call sitting next to Jim. So come on up real quick, and if you could point, point to me which language--
Well, Mr. Mosher is better than a computer with a search function, so I really appreciate that. Basically, I refer to it as Attachment C.
Do you happen to have the, is it printed at the bottom with a number, like 15-dash?
Yes, 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 yes. So there is 15-38.
Thanks. Give me just a moment, okay?
Top paragraph. At least two other references we found.
Yeah, give us just a second, because I want our city attorney to be able to move to that page as well. We good? All right. 15-38. 38. We're talking about the top there?
Correct.
All right, we're talking the blue. All right, give me just a moment.
While they're reading, it says, "The maximum permitted mooring length shall not exceed the established length of their mooring rows."
Yep. Okay, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate it. I understand the point.
There's two more, two more times.
Okay. I think I get it, though. I think the question is, how do we get to the, how do we have a legally established mooring row? And I understand the point. It's a good one.
And what the procedures are, right? And public input, yes.
All right. Well, it's code provision, and it'll be required. So how do we make sure that folks know that, know what the established length of their mooring rows will be? Is that going to, does it--
It will be based on a recommendation from the engineer.
No, I understand that. But that, but it, but it has to be somewhere. So it's either in a code, it's in a council policy, it's in a, you know, it's, it's an adoption from the, it's a resolution, it's an adoption from the Harbor Commission. How are we going to do this?
Yeah, the mooring length is on a permit, is on each permit. So the maximum allowed length for each permit exists today. Based on the pilot program, we may rearrange the location of that mooring, which we have the permission to do today. If there is really a requirement to--
I think what you're saying is, you're going to put everybody in a row, right, with the, with the lengths, which are already established.
Correct.
So I mean, we could just rely on, on the Harbor Master to basically relocate everyone into the rows, because the lengths, you know, basically the rows are based on the length, and they're going to put all the, all the same, same lengths together. If you wanted something more formal, we could, we could delegate it to the Harbor Commission and have them adopt it by resolution or something of that nature, if you want something more formal.
Certainly. And while we pursue our Coastal Commission permit, we will have time to put something through to the Harbor Commission that, based on the engineering, establishes those row lengths, and then comes to you as a recommendation.
Yeah. Give me just a second. I recognize I don't know quite how to ask this, so that's why I'm trying to get to, this is just probably inarticulate. So let's, if we're looking at the same slide right now, actually, could you go back one slide real quick? Okay. So let's say right now that there is someone who has, who's in, I mean, they're all over the map on this one, right? So there's, there's one field, there's one, we've got, you know, let's just make sure that everyone at least has the same. So top left, it says 55 feet, right below that is 40 feet. So the top left, that particular permit holder has a permit that says 55 feet.
Correct.
Okay. And then the one right below that says 40, so that person has a 40-foot on their permit.
Correct.
Okay, let's go, let's move forward one. All right, so now we've got exist, we've got moorings that could range from 30, and then, you know, you see all the different color codings. What happens if that particular, if the person who's in 55 doesn't have a boat that requires a 55, they've been moved down to a 50 or a 45? Are you going to change that on their permit?
No.
Okay, so they're always going to have a 55.
The permit will always be the permit, will always be the permit. They may be in a row that's bigger than what their permit allows.
But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be smaller than their permit allows?
Absolutely not.
Okay. That's the, that, okay. I'm good. Thanks.
Councilmember Stiggleton.
Any more last questions, Mayor Protem?
Do you have any idea, so the reason, just to be clear, the reason I kept referencing the attorneys is because I'm an attorney, and if you would like me to ask more questions--
He bills by the hour, by the way, so--
Guess so. Well, I had a lot of similar comments and questions, so thank you, Mayor Protem, for that. I just want to start by thanking our Harbor Commissioners. I know the effort that went into this over a long period of time. I appreciate all the commissioners and committee members we have in the city of Newport Beach, and your education and knowledge in the harbor does not go unnoticed. So thank you for your continued efforts, and thank you to all the mooring permit holders that came tonight. We have received your emails, and I appreciate the open communication. It has not gone unseen. I served on the Harbor Commission for four years. I happen to believe that the harbor is the number-one asset in our city, and I think we'd all agree with that. I spent my four years on the Harbor Commission really focusing on derelict vessels in the harbor, and we were successful at retrieving grant funding from the state of California every year. And while I was on the commission, we got rid of 26 derelict vessels. So I'm all about improving the views and the aesthetics of the harbor, making it boat-friendly, and obviously allowing access for the general public in Newport Beach. I'm very proud of our Harbor Department and the effort that former Mayor Duffy-Duffield put together in the Harbor Department. When I was on the Harbor Commission, we relied heavily on the Harbor Patrol Department to help manage the mooring fields. So I think we'd all agree that Harbor Master Blank is doing a much better job, and certainly the man for the job and his team to help manage this going forward. Regards to the pilot program, this is a pilot program. I'm excited to see, I will be supporting this, and I'm excited to see where this could go. to see, I will be supporting this, and I'm excited to see where this could go. In the seafield, I will be out there personally. If this does go through, I'd hope that each of you'd continue to communicate with us and let us know what's working and what's not working during the pilot program, if in fact it does happen. I will be supporting this because of the improved navigation, because of the optimization of the mooring fields, and because we'll be adding additional city moorings and allowing more access to the general public when it comes to boating, and the way I see it, as affordable boating in the mooring fields. Having wider fairways, increased spacing between moorings in the same row, and certainly improved views from the shoreline. So thank you, get into the Commission for your work on this effort.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, my family had a mooring in Newport for 45 years. My father got it in the 60s, and I, the mooring permit transferred to me. And I have a totally different boat, a larger powerboat, and I tried to get on it a few times, and I just figured out I couldn't safely get on that mooring, and that was H53. So I just decided to sell my permit. And, you know, it wasn't an easy decision, but with, with, especially for people with bigger powerboats that are on moorings, coming up to a mooring regardless, almost of wind direction, but certainly if the wind direction's on the side is hard, and so it is for sailboats. So I get the, the fear factor of change on this. And, but I've known all along, and I guess for some people in the audience, they weren't aware of the fact that you can go either direction on the mooring in this, in these, in all these schemes. And my father's boat was up three rows, so you would approach it, and there wasn't a fairway, so you just, you thread your way through the, and I'm sure you've all done this, you thread your way through the, the mooring field to get to your mooring, unless you're very fortunate to be on the outside or on the ends. And, you know, when you go out, you, to, to one gentleman's comment, you might leave in calm weather, calm tides, slack tide, and then come back, and it's a whole nother program. And this is true for people that have slips. We have all seen people try to jam a boat into a slip when they shouldn't be trying. You know, guys at the Bay Club, 90 degrees to westerly, and they come in on a 100-footer and try to jam it in there, and they take off the dock wheel and tear the hell out of the topsides. So those are all faults of the skipper. It's sort of like roads, there's no danger, road, dangerous roads, there's dangerous drivers. They're just driving too fast on a road that's not designed for it, or driving recklessly. And the same is true with boat operation. And there'll be times, I think this, I see this as working, basically, this, these fields and the way it's set up. But there will always be times when you could call the Harbor Department and say, could I get on the, the main dock and unload my passengers, or work some other arrangement? Because, I mean, I, I've done that many times to figure out some other way to get tied up for a little while in these, you know, in, in tough situations. So each captain's got to judge his, his, or her ability to get on the mooring, and your crew and the current. I never leave or come back without knowing which way the, the current's going, and try to solve for zero current on a timing schedule. But I know that's not always the case, so it's tough. But I, I guess my point is, there's been a lot of animosity between the NMA and the mooring permit holders and the Harbor Commission, and it's, it's been really difficult, because this is something that's really divided people. And I guess what I'm going to say here is, we need to give the trial. We need to have the trial, we need to hold it, and we need people to, to, you know, give it a good shot. Because I think this is, on balance, this is a good plan. But I'm ready to be, you know, to change. I mean, all of us, nobody wants people to have a tough time getting on their mooring, tougher than it is now. So, but we have to, we have to do the trial. And I hope everybody, if this goes through, I mean, those that participate in it, do it objectively and experiment. And so I liken this to, and I think, you know, I, I picked up a mooring two days ago in Avalon. I was on a 75-foot boat, the breeze was sort of sideways. But we had a, a, a puller wheel, and we just took sandline, and some of you have done this over at the island, and you can run that down the topside, and that will bring your stern line, your, your spreader line into you, so you can grab the stern mooring. So you don't have to have two mooring balls, right? You can have one mooring ball and just have it exactly like it picking up a mooring at Catalina, or at Avalon, or at the Isthmus. So those are, I see that as pretty common to what we normally do. And I know all of you have picked up moorings over at Catalina. So I think the wider channels, yes, there's probably going to be more traffic through there, but there's always been traffic through the moorings. There's been, you know, you've seen it. And here we've got wider channels, and, but I see them as really advantageous for the permities, because they've got a channel to go down that's fairly wide to make their turn to get up to their mooring, rather than work through a field trying to get up to your mooring in between boats. So, you know, a lot of talk about aesthetics, and I just think that's about what you like. Newport Harbor is not a regimented harbor, basically, in terms of Marina Del Rey is regimented, it was planned, it's like, you know, it's just everything's in regimented rows in, in the, in the bays that Marina Del Rey has. Newport Beach is undulating around the islands, everything else. And I got to think, to me, that's a better perspective. The mooring field has never offended me in terms of the way it looks. And it's part, and, and this will not look bad either, because it's not the moorings, it's not the water, it's the boats that are going to be different, and that adds to the, to the variability of the scene. So, you know, I don't have an opinion one way or another as to the aesthetics of the, of the moorings, and the aesthetics of the boats that'll be on, and they'll all be different. And so it'll read not regimented. Some people disagree with that clearly, but that's another reason to do the trial. But then, aesthetics is not the, it's way down the list, I think, of, of objectives here. We're here to provide people with good spots to tie up their boats at reduced rates, at less rates, make it affordable, and make it safe. So I think we're going to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
So, yes, I agree. We are hearing pretty uniformly that we're looking for something that's safe, that's accessible, that's just recreation-friendly. We're hearing that from the members of the public, from our Harbor Commission, our Harbor Master, our staff. So this journey is pretty uniform, that everyone's looking for that. The problem is, is that we don't seem to have consensus from all stakeholders on how exactly to accomplish that. And I, I do think it's regrettable that we have almost an 180-degree difference in opinions on those matters. As former Mayor Duffy said, the good news is, is that this is a pilot program. I think there's probably consensus that we are going to study it as it moves along, we'll tweak it if we need to. If it's absolutely not something that's workable at all, if it really is a safety issue or another issue that we can't repair, then we'll be back here, you know, doing exactly the same thing. I would ask for a point of clarification from the city attorney. So we're talking about two different things here. We're talking about an actual reconfiguration of the mechanics of the fields, but we're also talking about some reconfiguration of our code. And I'm wondering, just process-wise, I understand that if this project works out, and we absolutely are going to move forward with the, you know, the real program, not the pilot program, that we will need to modify the code. But do we need to do that prior, or can we accomplish the pilot? You know, it seems like there's a little bit of hesitance, like, why are we making this, you know, putting this into concrete before we actually know where we're going with it? So could you just weigh in on that a little bit?
I, I do think you need to make the changes of the code, because some of it just doesn't work without changing the provisions of the code. For example, you know, if they do create any new moorings out there in the seafield while this is, is happening, those would be new moorings, you wouldn't want to give it to somebody, and then they would have a, you know, a right to transferability of it, as opposed to us just leasing it. So I do think there's a lot of different provisions, that's just an example, but, you know, that need to be changed. And I, I don't think that the primary concerns that the public has are really being impacted. If they have a permit, they're going to be able to transfer it in perpetuity, and, and so that's not a concern. I think that a lot of people are concerned that they're going to lose the value of the permit. And then who can they transfer to? Well, you know, they kind of pick and chose what they wanted out of the code. I mean, it doesn't really change, they can still transfer to an individual person. You know, they kept saying, well, I can only transfer to a family member. Well, you know, they're picking and choosing what they're reading out of the code. That's not the case. So we do think the changes are necessary in order to implement this. And if, if for some reason the trial doesn't work out, we can change, we can easily change it back.
So are we actually creating the new mooring permits during the pilot program, or is that something eventually we'll be creating? Will we be creating new permits that we're going to be issuing out, that will be city-owned? I thought the pilot program was just to reevaluate how the mooring field C was working with, with respect to the existing permits?
There is the opportunity during the pilot to create new moorings, up to seven.
Okay.
And the program associated with utilization of that is going to be discussed at a Harbor Commission meeting in the very near future.
So in the event that we need to change the pilot program, or it, for some reason, didn't succeed, we would just eliminate those moorings after we create them?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Kleinman.
Thank you. I just want to commend the Harbor Commission for tackling this project, doing what you've been tasked to do, which is balance the interests of all the stakeholders of this special amenity that we have, both the privilege and the obligation to preserve. I am not a mariner myself, but I trust that the Harbor Department will do what's needed to ensure the safety of everyone in the harbor as a top priority. So I too will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery.
Yeah, I just, because I've, I've talked to a lot of mooring permities and, and members of the Harbor Commission. Councilmember Duffy and I have had conversations about this, and I think, I, I just think that we, we're trying to get to the same place, but this is just a, a change that's, that's difficult. And, but I think ultimately, for me, I think for the Commission, we, 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 there is a benefit here, all things being equal, to, to the accessibility of the moorings, the safety is, is providing more space for the public to operate in channels, and more maneuverability in certain parts of the harbor. And I think overall, it's a, it's a good, it's a good change. But I implore during, if we do this, this trial, that, that people really give it a fair shot. And I think we'll know the result pretty quick. So I appreciate everybody's time, and those that have written emails, the permities have written emails. But this is a group of people that were, the Harbor Commission have worked hard on this, and so I think that needs to be acknowledged. Nobody is working against mooring permities. Everyone's trying to get to something that's, that's better for everybody. And I guess coming from government, it's not very satisfying, is it? But it, I don't see how this is not going to work, frankly. So, we'll see, huh?
Thank you. And I just have a couple of quick comments, and then we'll get to the vote on this one. You know, I, I do come to this from a different perspective, where I look at our harbor as the jewel of our city. And I appreciate the passion that all of you brought to this, because you clearly love your moorings. And I love what our Commission has done, because I believe that your love should be transferred to lots of people that want to come in and enjoy exactly what you're enjoying. And we don't own these moorings. We actually are just stewards of them, just like you then lease them and are stewards of them as well. They're owned by the state of California, and then we help regulate that process, much like happens in all of our tidelands. And our goal has to be that we look at the city as a whole, and we look at the visitors as a whole. And I love this idea that we are adding more, so that other people get the opportunity to enjoy what every one of you so passionately got up here and told us about. Because that should be the right to people that want to get into the harbor. And you have gotten that opportunity for so many years, as so many of you have told us. And so we're working really hard to give others that opportunity. That's part of this glory of what we get to do. And I appreciate all those perspectives, but I do at one point have to ask, this enjoyment that you have felt for so long, don't you want others to feel it? And I think that is a huge point of what our Commission is trying to do. By realigning and looking at the enjoyment of the harbor that we're so passionate about, we want to see other people also get passionate about our harbor, because it is so important to every one of us. And so in adding some, I know, and I see some of the head shaking out there, I'm sorry. This is how it's going to be moving forward, at least from my perspective. And I think that it is great to clean up. It's never pretty, and it's never exciting, because there's always going to be people that feel that they have been wronged in a situation like this. But I have to tell you, I've, I've looked at the time and energy that people have put in, and it's not from a place of malice, or discontent, or trying to punish people that have had these. It's from a point of love and passion, and trying to give more people that same peace. So I appreciate all the comments tonight. I greatly appreciate the time, work, and energy that's been put in by both the Harbor Department and the Harbor Commission. I'm very happy that I got to see former Mayor Duffy Duffield here. He didn't even like coming to these when he was on council, so it's nice to see him here now, when he doesn't have to show up. So with that...
We do a motion.
We do. You want to, you want to make that motion? You want Brad to make that motion? Who's excited to make this motion? I'm happy to make the motion. We have a second? Second by Councilmember Stapleton. Wonderful. Let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for Ordinance 2023-8, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Section 17.25.020 Anchorage Birthing and Mooring Regulations and 17.60.40 Mooring Permits of the Newport Beach Municipal Code. Thumbs up. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Wonderful. Okay. Madam Clerk, please read the announcements for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Wonderful. Seeing none, we are adjourned.